A call to meeting the January 23, 2018, regular council meeting to order. And we'll have our invocation tonight by Reverend John Cole II, Centenary Methodist Church. And I'll ask my council colleagues to stand, and then will be led after the invocation and the pledge of allegiance by Councilman Bill Moody.
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, City Council, and the citizens of Portsmouth, Virginia. I'm here as a representative of Centenary United Methodist Church, and we've been in continuous ministry to the city of Portsmouth and the surrounding area for over 200 continuous years. We had our start in 1784, and we've been in ministry ever since. We currently are outreach into our community even now in many different ways. We participate in the Portsmouth Volunteers for the Homeless with St. John's Episcopal Church, and we also are offering the Good News Bible Club at Churchland Elementary School after schools on Monday evenings for anybody who wants to come who are elementary-age students. So, there's a lot of other things we're doing, but we don't have time for that tonight. But it's an honor and a pleasure to be here and to offer prayer for our city council. Heavenly Father, we thank you so much for this evening and for bringing us all here safely. Lord, you have brought us in so many ways. You've brought us into a new year, and we ask, Lord, that you bless the new year, the new year of meetings and administration and business. Lord, we ask that you bless all those in our community, first our citizens, and, Lord, that you bless all those who work, first responders, our police officers, our teachers, our city workers, our city council, and our mayor. Lord, we thank you for all those who have it in their hearts to serve our community in such significant and important ways. Lord, we ask that you bless this evening and this meeting. We ask that you bless us with patience, and, Lord, we ask that you bless us with wisdom. Help us, Lord, to work together for a common purpose of the people of Portsmouth. Importantly, Lord, we ask that you continue to prosper our city. Lord, give us a year to remember this year, that we'll have resources and we'll have abundance, that we'll be able to share one with another uninhibitently. Lord, again, we thank you for this evening, and we ask your blessing upon this meeting. These things we ask in Jesus' name, who came with a stated mission of redeeming the world. These things we ask in Jesus' name, amen.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Well, now I'll have our roll call, and I'll ask the members of council to indicate your presence electronically by hitting the yes button. And, Madam Clerk, we have unanimous attendance. Next item on our agenda is the approval of the minutes. We have the minutes of a call meeting of January the 9th, 2018. We have the minutes of the regular meeting of January the 9th, 2018, and we have the minutes of a call meeting of January 16, 2018. Is there a motion to approve these minutes?
Move for adoption?
Second.
We have a motion to approve that's been duly seconded. Any discussion? All in favor of the motion, please vote yes. Opposed, no. Madam Clerk, that motion carries. We next come to special presentations, and we have two. The first is a heart-related proclamation, and the second is, and I'll call upon Councilman Bill Moody for the second, is to present our newly appointed boards and commission members with city pins. And at this time, I'll ask Tanya Weaver, who represents the American Heart Association, if, ma'am, you'll join me down here at the front.
It's "City of Portsmouth Proclamation." Whereas cardiovascular diseases are the number-one killer of women in the United States, and whereas cardiovascular disease kills one woman almost every 80 seconds in the United States, and whereas 80% of all heart diseases may be prevented, and whereas some risk factors such as blood pressure, smoking, cholesterol, and lack of regular physical activity can be controlled, and whereas the American Heart Association's Go Red for Women movement motivates women to learn their family history and to meet with a health care provider to determine their risk for heart disease and stroke, whereas Go Red for Women encourages women to take control of their heart health by knowing the five numbers that can be life-changing. And those numbers are: one, total cholesterol; two, HDL, or the good cholesterol; three, blood pressure; four, blood sugar; and five, body mass index, BMI. Now, therefore, I, John Rowe, Mayor of the City of Portsmouth, do hereby proclaim Friday, February 2, 2018, as National Wear Red Day in the city of Portsmouth, and I encourage all citizens to wear something red to show that we're going to take on this disease, right?
That's right.
And I want to ask Ms. Weaver if you would say some comments, and if you would take the proclamation and make sure that your organization gets a copy, please.
Certainly will. Very brief, on behalf of the American Heart Association, I'd just like to thank the city of Portsmouth for recognizing and proclaiming February 2 as our National Wear Red Day. My story is much like many of you all. Many of us have been affected in some way by heart disease, ourselves, family members, and friends, but it's because of lack of awareness that many of us have not taken control of this disease more effectively in women. As an employee of the Virginia Department of Health, Portsmouth Health Department, I see and I know well the disparities that face our city, but more recently, I see where awareness is diminishing these numbers in the disparities of health. So, on behalf of the American Heart Association, on behalf of the Portsmouth Health Department, on behalf of faith-based health initiatives, sororities, and fraternities who have health initiatives, we say thank you, thank you, to the city of Portsmouth for declaring February 2 as our National Wear Red for Heart Health in Women. Thank you so much.
Thank you again. I'll now call on Councilman Bill Moody, our most-tenured member of council, to present -- I didn't say oldest, I said most-tenured -- to present the lapel pins to our new appointees to boards and commissions. Phil?
Thank you, Mayor. I get the heebie-jeebies every time he says tenured.
If the following would please join Councilman Moody at the Sergeant-at-Arms desk. With the Historic Preservation Commission, Ms. Paula Sawyer. With the Museum and Fine Arts Commission, Ms. Kendra Robinson. With the Planning Commission, Ms. Edwina Ricks. With the Portsmouth Supplemental Retirement Board, Mr. Landon Moore and Mr. Mark Munson.
Ladies and gentlemen, how about a nice round of applause for our newest volunteer? We know time is extremely valuable. It means a lot that you're going to help us make this city a better place to live, work, and play. It's appreciated by all of us. And it's not many, so I'm going to give the mic to you. We'd like to hear why you volunteered.
I'm Mark Munson. I'm on the Supplemental Retirement Board. I adopted Portsmouth as my new hometown when I retired from the Navy 15 years ago, and I just want to help make this a better place and take care of the folks that have served our city.
Landon Moore, I'm a longtime resident of Portsmouth, and I have some professional experience with retirement plans, and I saw the opening on this board and just wanted to help. So, thank you for the opportunity.
My name is Edwina Ricks. I go by Ed. It's so good to be back in Portsmouth. Retired after 30 years with VRS, and I started out in Portsmouth. I live here, and I want to give back because I learned so much when I first joined Portsmouth in 1979.
I'm Kendra Robinson. I'm the founder of the Community Outreach Coalition here in Portsmouth, and I founded that nonprofit to give back my gifts and talents to youth. And a lot of our initiatives are in fine arts, so I wanted to continue to work in the fine arts field and bring other things to Portsmouth through the Fine Arts Commission.
I'm Paula Gillis Sawyer, and I love this city, even though I am not a native, but the city is as close to my hometown as -- it's just beautiful. And we have such wonderful people, and the people here reach out and speak to one another, and there's really not met a stranger here, so I look forward to this commission, and thank you.
Let's give them another round of applause.
Thank you, Bill. And thank you to our volunteers. Our time is our scariest and most precious resource, and we thank you for volunteering your time to our great community. Madam Clerk, would you read the protocol for speakers, please?
Yes, sir. Ladies and gentlemen, City Council rules require a limited up to five minutes to speak. As you approach the speaker's podium, you will notice a timer. At the beginning of your five minutes, you will see a green light. Four minutes into your remarks, you will notice a yellow light. At the end of five minutes, you will see a red light, hear a beep, and we ask that you conclude your comments at that time. While speakers have an opportunity to address council on matters of public concern, all comments should be made in a manner that respects the seriousness of the forum and should not be made in a belligerent, sarcastic, or demeaning fashion. A speaker who fails to observe this basic rule of decorum will be deemed out of order and not allowed to conclude his or her comments.
Thank you, ma'am.
Yes, sir.
Our next item on the agenda is unfinished business, and we have our consent agenda, which consists of three resolutions, Agenda Item 1813A, 1813B, and 1813D. I'm going to ask the city clerk to read the caption of all three resolutions, and then I'll entertain a motion to adopt the consent agenda.
Yes, sir. A resolution rescinding use permit UP 1601 and granting a use permit UP 1711 for the construction of multifamily housing at One Lexington Drive. Item B, resolution granting a use permit UP 1712 to Bountiful Blessings Daycare LLC to operate a child care center at 2115 High Street. And Item D, a resolution granting a use permit UP 1714 to T-Mobile Communications to construct and operate a 165-foot monopole telecommunications tower at 3910 Victory Boulevard.
So that we can consider these three items on the consent agenda, is there a motion to approve the consent agenda and by doing so, adopt all three resolutions?
So moved.
Sir, a second. Okay, we have a motion that's been made and seconded. Any discussion? Dr. Whitaker?
Yes, I just want to make sure we're clear. So, are we going to vote on each one of these individually?
Only if council desires. It's part of the consent agenda. The motion is to approve the consent agenda, so the motion would be to approve all three with one vote.
I just want -- is that fine with our city attorney?
Go ahead.
Yes, there's no issue with that.
Okay.
Okay. Any other, any further discussion? Ready for the question? The question is the approval of the consent agenda by doing so, which approves all three resolutions, 1813A, 1813B, and 1813D. All in favor of the motion, please vote yes. Opposed, no. And, Madam Clerk, that motion carries.
Yes, sir.
Which brings us to Item 1813C, and you do have a letter pertaining to this matter. Would you read the letter, please?
Yes, sir. Dear Ms. White, I am writing to you on behalf of the applicant to request that the referenced conditional use permit application be withdrawn from further consideration by city council. Please do not hesitate to contact me should you have any questions regarding this request, and is signed by Ms. Lisa Murphy.
Ladies and gentlemen of council, we have a request to withdraw this conditional use permit, and we need to act on that request.
May I accept the withdrawal request?
Is there -- okay, we have a motion to accept the withdrawal request, and if that motion carries, then there's no action on 1813C, no further action. Everybody understand the motion? Any discussion? Dr. Whitaker?
Yes, just for a purpose, for the neighborhood to understand what we're doing, can we explain the ramifications of what we're about to do so that they're clear?
Yes, sir, that's very good. And I'll ask the city attorney to explain the difference between what we're doing.
Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of city council, it has been routine that in the process of having a use permit at various points in time, the applicant may choose to or request a withdrawal of that application. Historically, the city council has entertained that process as the most efficient manner in which to give, be it the applicant, a recognition of concerns or issues set forth by the community, as well as giving the council the opportunity to have an applicant control the manner in which they wish to apply or withdraw that application process. That provides both a recognition of comments and concerns that were raised previously, as well as gives the applicant an opportunity, should they choose to, at some point in time, further dialogue with the community as it relates to a particular project.
Thank you, sir. Further explanation, this matter is on its second reading. On the first reading, the vote, the motion was to deny the request, and that motion passed on a 7-0 vote. If we were to vote again on the same question tonight, and if that motion was to pass, then the applicant would have to wait one year before coming back with another proposed location. By withdrawing the application, and if we grant that withdrawal, they can come back with a different site quicker than one year. Is that correct, Mr. City Attorney?
That is correct.
Okay. Everybody understand? Any further discussion? Ready for the question? The question is to approve the request to withdraw. All in favor of the motion, please vote yes. Opposed, no. And, Madam Clerk, that motion carries.
Yes, sir.
We now move to the city manager's report, and the first item is Item 1840, which is the consideration of an adoption of a certain ordinance. And, Madam Clerk, will you read the caption of the ordinance, please?
Yes, sir. An ordinance accepting aid to localities funds in the amount of $319,387 from the Virginia Department of Fire Programs and Appropriating Said Funds in the FY 2018 Grants Fund for used by the Department of Fire, Rescue, and Emergency Services.
Thank you, ma'am. So that we can consider this matter, is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion that's been made to adopt the ordinance, and it's been duly seconded. Any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor of the motion to adopt, please vote yes. Opposed, no. And, Madam Clerk, that motion carries.
Yes, sir.
Which brings us to Item 1814, which is the consideration of the adoption of another ordinance. Would you read that caption, please?
Yes, sir. An ordinance accepting a grant in the amount of $19,544 from the Virginia Department of Criminal Justice Services and appropriating said funds -- excuse me, said amount in the FY 2018 Grants Fund for used by the Portsmouth Community Criminal Justice Board to conduct comprehensive planning.
Thank you. So that we can consider this matter, is there a motion to adopt?
Move for adoption. Second.
We have a motion to adopt the ordinance that's been duly made and seconded. Any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor of the motion, please vote yes. Opposed, no. And, Madam Clerk, that motion carries.
Yes, sir.
Which brings us to Item 1814, consideration of the adoption of another ordinance. Will you read that caption, please?
Yes, sir. An ordinance to amend Section 10-99 of Chapter 10 of the Code of the City of Portsmouth, Virginia to change the voting location for precinct number 14 from Emily N. Spahn Preschool to Brighton Elementary School located at 1100 Portsmouth Boulevard.
Thank you. So that we can consider this matter, is there a motion to adopt?
Second.
We have a motion that's been duly made and seconded. We're ready for a discussion. The chair recognizes Councilman Moody.
Thank you, Mayor. I think it would be good if a member of staff could explain why the precinct's being moved.
Thank you, sir. Madam City Manager?
Yes, Mayor, Vice Mayor, and members of city council and to the public, the removing or the change of the precinct from Emily Spahn Preschool to Brighton Elementary School in last year's facilities closure, Emily Spahn was closed, and it's no longer a preschool at that school, and so that is why the precinct is moving to Brighton Elementary School, which is in close proximity of Emily Spahn.
Thank you. Any further discussion on the motion? We're hearing none. Ready for the question? The motion is to approve. All in favor of the motion, please vote yes. Opposed, no. And, Madam Clerk, that motion carries.
Yes, sir.
Which brings us to Item 1843, the consideration of another ordinance and the adoption of the same. Madam Clerk, would you read that caption?
Yes, sir. An ordinance authorizing the transfer of $175,000 from the nondepartmental salary allowance for salary savings line item in the FY 2018 general fund budget to the nondepartmental benefits retiree supplemental line item in the FY 2018 general fund budget for the purpose of funding a one-time supplement in the gross amount of $500 to beneficiaries under the Portsmouth Supplemental Retirement System and the Fire and Police Retirement System who did not receive the one-time supplement authorized by ordinance 2017-103, adopted by city council on November 28, 2017.
Thank you, ma'am. So that we can consider this matter, is there a motion to adopt?
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion to adopt the ordinance that's been duly made and seconded. Any discussion on the ordinance? We do have two speakers. The first speaker is Mark Gdolgi-Yotrowski, and, sir, you have five minutes.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, honorable members of council, and fellow interested parties. Those who have heard me speak on items of this type may be confused by the fact that I'm speaking in favor of this one, and the reason that I cannot oppose it, although I have issues with the process, is that other retirees who are similarly situated have already been granted this supplement, and it would be inequitable to draw a line and put one group on one side and one group on the other side, the ins and the outs. So, since you have already done this for the other portion, it's only equitable that you do the same. Now, the problem I have with what you've done previously is it's poor policy. I believe that the long-running tradition here of giving retirees half the increase that you give to regular-serving employees is wrong, that there should be a limitation on any supplements given to retirees that is the lesser of the Social Security increase for retirees drawing Social Security, or the increase in the growth in revenue for the city. That would make more sense in terms of a policy. The other objection, and other objection that I have, is that, as I've stated previously, the council's focus should be on getting our supplemental retirement funds up to 100% of the actuarial requirement. Since, as long as I can remember, up until the time that the pension obligation bonds were sold and those funds deposited in the Portsmouth Supplemental Retirement System account, the actuarial requirements and our level of funding have been moving farther apart. Once those pension obligation fund receipts were deposited, that temporarily moved it in the other direction for the Portsmouth Supplemental Retirement System, but from that point on, we have been drifting down again. Therein lies the challenge and the opportunity, because if those fund levels were fully funded, and that would take some stretching for us to do, but that's where we need to be. If they were fully funded, then all of that money could be working to provide cost-of-living increases for retirees. As it is, we're not even staying even with where we need to be. So, for those reasons, I object to this kind of supplement. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. And our second speaker is Garland Alexander, and, sir, you have five minutes.
Thank you, Mayor. Mayor Rowe, Vice Mayor Simmons, council members, city manager, Dr. Patton. I'm here-- I'm here tonight to speak on this item. I believe that it was oversight when we approved this back in November for the people that received it, and I appreciate the council addressing this tonight, and I would like to have, we have some of the widows here that will stand, and then the rest of you that stands in support of this. And we would ask that you approve this tonight, and I believe it was just oversight, and we appreciate your consideration. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Any further discussion on the motion, which is to adopt this ordinance? Any further discussion? Ready for the question? All in favor of the motion, please vote yes, opposed no. And Madam Clerk, that motion carries. Which brings us to new business. Item 1844, boards and commissions, and Councilman Moody, we don't have a report for this meeting, but the next meeting, right?
Correct.
Thank you, sir. Next item is 1845, items submitted by council members, and the Chair recognizes Vice Mayor Simmons.
Thank you, sir. It's always my duty to tell you things that are happening in the city, and so this coming Saturday, January 27, we have some of our Black History-focused activities. The Buffalo Riders will be at the Portsmouth Colored Community Library Museum, celebrating at 10:00 a.m. on Saturday morning. You'll meet Ken Wright, who's the president of the Buffalo Riders, and discuss how this group of troops has impacted the local area and nationwide through research and images. At the main library on Court Street at 1:00 on Saturday afternoon, the Portsmouth Town, Porttown Magic Orchestra will be playing a free concert, so you might go enjoy that. On Thursday, February 1, next week, at 6:00 p.m. here in City Hall, we will have a Portsmouth Budget Community Engagement Forum. So that is a time in this chamber where citizens will be able to let City Council and staff know what your interests are in our upcoming budget. Also, if you're really interested in your workings of your council, the council will have its council retreat on February 2 and 3. That's a Friday and Saturday. We'll be at the Airfield Conference Center in Wakefield, Virginia. It is open to the public. You can't speak, but you can watch the action if you so desire. If you want information on the location, how to get there, you can speak with our city clerk, Deborah White. She can be reached at 393-8639. One more event I forgot, on Saturday, January 27, the Echoes of Joy. Health screening, haircuts, clothes closets, meals, and entertainment will be at the neighborhood facility rec. center on Elm Avenue, and that will be from 11:00 a.m. to 3:00 p.m.
Thank you, ma'am. Any others? Brings us to Item 1846, report on pending items, and Madam City Manager.
Yes, Mayor, we will ask Mrs. Hoag to come up and give a report.
Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor, members of City Council. The following is an update on the CSX grass issue. On January 18, the Director of Permits and Inspections and Assistant City Attorney and the Embusmen spoke with the real estate and facilities management staff person and the Portsmouth Terminal Manager to discuss the need for continuing maintenance of CSX properties. The city was advised that it is standard practice for CSX to only cut their properties twice a year. They agreed to add two additional cuttings to the property on County Street, and to also look at ways to removing the grass permanently. The city will continue to research case law on the requirements of railroads to maintain their properties in accordance with city code. The permits and inspections department will proceed with citing their properties once the grass is higher than 10 inches, and if necessary, pursue legal action.
Thank you, ma'am. Does any member of council have any questions? Dr. Whitaker, you have the floor.
Yes, just want to get some clarification on what is, what is the ramifications to the city if the city were to send a private contractor to cut the grass?
Mr. City Attorney.
Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of City Council, CSX has provided us the relevant federal statutes that govern the railway and vegetation next to the railway. It is private property, and although we have zoning issues, and as Ms. Hoag has mentioned, we are still in discussions with them about the intersection between both, what is clear is because that property is adjacent to a railway, there would be some liability issues, perhaps, towards the city if we were to enter that roadway, especially while it was in use. And so we've had that discussion, both with their legal counsel, as well as their property manager. We've explained to them what the concerns are, and that we will follow up, and as Ms. Hoag has said, they have modified their schedule, one, to address the issue in the short term, but we've also advised them that if we have issues going forward, we would be contacting someone to bring them, if need be, before the bar in order to address that intersection between zoning law and the federal regulations that govern the railway.
Any other questions? Thank you. Thank you, Dr. Patton, for bringing this back. Which brings us to Item 1847, non-agenda speakers, and we have one, Donna Si, and ma'am, you have five minutes.
Good evening. My name is Donna Si, and I live in the Woodbine Farms neighborhood. Principles of Liberty 10 reads, "The God-given right to govern is vested in the sovereign authority of the whole people." Unfortunately, not only for our city, but also for humanity too, we are allowing our basic freedoms to be taken from us. In Portsmouth, our legislators are allowing the city manager to continually present policies and resolutions that are infringing on our basic freedom, and like sheep, many are holding their peace and allowing it. A few of us are not. A few of us are not going to allow policies, surveys, and resolutions to infringe on our basic freedoms. For example, last night, there was a work session that included the PowerPoint on strategy budget initiatives. There are eight slides in this presentation. The second slide identifies four budget themes, review, reflect, refocus, and restore. This was not explained in the PowerPoint material. In the budget manual for the 1718, those words were explained. Review means a formal assessment of or examination of all aspects of the budget, with the possibility or intention of instituting change where necessary. The question is, since the 201718 budget has been examined, what was the changes necessary for this year's budget? Reflect means thinking deeply and carefully about goals and formulating cost-effective plans with careful consideration for all budget recommendations. What are all the budget recommendations? Refocus means focusing attention and resources on doing things differently, setting priorities in city programs, or using different approaches to the delivery of services through combining services and collaboration. What were the priorities set from the budget recommendation, and the combining of the delivery of services for each of the departments? Restore means to, restore means to strengthen and reestablish attention and resources for all core city programs and service delivery. Provide new energy to better maximize the city's resources that realigns with the city's council's vision statement. How does all these themes align with the city council's vision statement? If the city manager is making all these decisions independently of the people, how are we people, the people self-governing? Our social contract reads that it is an implicit agreement between the government and the government defining and limiting the rights and duties of each. To hand out, before the elected appointed staff of our city can get to the budgeting process, there needs to be a structure in place which shows that the citizens are to self-govern and be governed. The elected appointed staff needs to know how the citizens' rights and duties are being applied to their work. Looking at the structure of the city, one will notice that the people are listed at the top of the city's structure. Looking at the structure, it is broken. There are no communication lines to control each department with each other, or communication lines within each department. There are no lines of communication of the boards or commissions to the departments. What about a reflection on the lack of a comprehensive structure to review the goals of each department and review the job descriptions of all personnel? What about refocus on the needs of the personnel to do their job well, so they can enjoy the fruits of their labor? With the correct structure of the city's department, along with job descriptions, it will restore the city's resources for the budgeting process. It also realigns with the city's council's vision statement and guiding principles of respectful communication, zero tolerance for disrespect, leading by example, and no surprises. After the PowerPoint presentation given by Mr. Casey on 201819 budget calendar keys, he showed a draft survey that sent Donna over the edge. This survey demonstrates that the people's right to self-govern are going to be denied. With this survey, the people's right to privacy and their right to personal security are also going to be denied. If the city manager wants the government to be transparent, reestablish the Finance Committee. That was disbanded. Thanks for listening.
Thank you, ma'am. This concludes our agenda, and this meeting is adjourned.